Welcome everyone. Here we are. Again, we have a lot of good information this evening. I'd like to kick off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two presentations lined up. The first one is a presentation on Good Cause Eviction Law. Correct?
Yes.
So we would like to welcome you and would like to invite you up to our podium. Please introduce yourself and let's go.
Okay. I do have a slide deck, but I don't need to use it because I wasn't here.
Okay, well, we didn't know.
That's fine. I won't use it.
If we would've known, we could've helped you out very much.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much.
Yeah, if you want to pull it closer, that one you have to kind of like speak directly right now.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me tonight. My name is Naomi Dan. I'm the Chief of Staff at Housing Justice for All. We are a statewide coalition of tenant and community organizations who work together to fight for housing as a human right. We were the grassroots coalition that was the driving force behind winning Good Cause Eviction this past April, which is in the state budget, which is one of the largest expansions of tenants' rights in many decades. So the state passed Good Cause Eviction in April after considering it for about five years. And unfortunately, due to lobbying by corporate landlords who didn't want to be covered by these tenant protections, the new state law requires municipalities like the Village of Reinbeck to pass a local law to adopt the tenant protections if you want them to apply here to tenants in the village. And many other Hudson Valley communities have already started adopting the tenant protections. Kingston, Poughkeepsie, Newburgh, Beacon, Nyack, I think just last week, the week before, became the first village to adopt the protections. There's a couple others, Hudson, the town of Poughkeepsie, the town of Fishkill, that are already looking into it. So in the last like couple months, these tenant protections have become available as a tool for towns to address the housing crisis that really everywhere in New York State is experiencing. So I want to talk a little about what Good Cause does and then give you guys time to ask any questions. And I passed out a piece of paper which gives just a little bit more of the background and the details. But essentially, what Good Cause does is empower tenants to negotiate the terms of their lease when it comes time to renew them so that they could lower exorbitant rent hikes and protect them against arbitrary retaliatory evictions if they end up in housing court. It ensures that tenants can plan to stay in their homes and in their communities with less fear of being priced out and enables tenants to raise safety issues and repair issues with their landlord without fear that when it comes time to renew the lease, the landlord might just decide, these people, they've raised too many issues, I don't want them anymore. So rather than constant worry that when the lease ends, you might have to move, taking your kids out of school, moving farther away from childcare or jobs or your family, Good Cause essentially makes it a norm that if you're paying the rent and you follow the lease, you can expect to renew it at a reasonable rent. It's a pretty low bar actually, but that isn't the case for most renters right now. There's basically nothing stopping renters, stopping landlords from deciding, you know, I think the market will bear a 50% rent increase, so I'm going to ask for it. And if they can't pay it, too bad, they have to go. So it does not change a lot for good landlords, landlords that are making repairs, asking for reasonable rent increases. It's not going to change their business. They'll still be able to evict tenants for things like nonpayment, damage, nuisance, recovering the unit for personal use, many other good causes that are enumerated in the law. They will still be able to raise rent annually by a substantial amount to meet changes in their costs and to be able to turn a reasonable profit. What the policy is actually designed to do is to discourage predatory corporate landlords whose business model is predicated on buying up properties and pushing out the current tenants in order to raise rents and have higher paying tenants come in so that they can make more profit. So the new state Good Cause Eviction Law, in addition to requiring a municipality to opt in if they want these protections for the renters in their community, also includes a bunch of loopholes that make it not quite as strong as we had hoped when we fought to pass the policy. That means that certain kinds of housing are already excluded by the state law. And if Reinbeck were to adopt it, it would be able to change some of these exemptions. There are a few things that Reinbeck has the power to decide that could impact actually how many renters get these protections. So the state law exempts new housing, so any units built within the last 30 years dating back to 2009. It exempts public housing, units that are already covered by regulatory agreements. Those tenants already have actually a much stronger version of Good Cause protections. And it exempts units that are rented from co-ops or condos or mobile homes or owner-occupied buildings with fewer than 11 units. So in the state law, small landlords, like let's say you are renting out your basement unit or a mother-in-law unit, those are already exempted by the state law. So there is some protection for small landlords. What the Village of Reinbeck should consider, if you're interested in adopting this policy, is two different changes to the law that the state law allows you to make. And we would recommend changing those things so that the policy covers as many people as possible. The first thing is the portfolio exemption. In the law, it's described as a small landlord exemption, but it's actually a little confusing because there already is the small landlord exemption of owner-occupied units. So what the law says is you can set the number of units in the landlord's portfolio for them to be able to be exempt from the protections. We recommend dropping that threshold all the way down to one. The state set it for 10 units for the city of New York, but the Village of Reinbeck has really different housing stock than the city of New York. So in order to make it more applicable here, dropping that threshold down to one unit will mean that tenants here know that they have these protections. And that's really what's essential. If you don't know that you would be protected, that you are likely to be able to renew your lease if you raise a repair issue, then you might not be comfortable raising that issue because you might still be afraid that you would get evicted. So you need to know that you have the protections in order to be able to exercise them. If that threshold is much higher and you're a tenant, let's say in a two-unit building where there's like two families living in one building, but you don't know how many other buildings your landlord owns, you'd never know whether or not you had the protections. So dropping that to one would ensure that most tenants in the Village of Reinbeck would know that they had protection. The other thing about that is that a larger portfolio size really increases incentives for corporate landlords that are really used to coming in and creating a bunch of multiple LLCs, limited liability companies to hide or to just organize how they manage their portfolio. And because there's very, very little transparency of the ownership behind LLCs, it's really, really difficult for tenants to know whether or not they're covered. So the way to get around this problem, which could really mean that the law is really hard for tenants to exercise their rights, is to drop that portfolio size exemption down to one. The second thing that the village would have the opportunity to change is a luxury rent exemption. So the state law provides for, you know, someone's paying a whole lot of money for an apartment, maybe it shouldn't have these protections. Personally, I don't agree. I think, you know, if you're a renter, you should be able to stay in your apartment at a reasonable rent. If you're following your lease, that seems pretty good. It just shouldn't really matter whether you're paying $5,000 for your unit or $900 for your unit. So the village could decide to raise the threshold that's in the law. It's set at a percentage of the fair market rent, which is a calculation that HUD uses to decide how much to pay in housing vouchers. It's actually usually the fair market rent is much lower than what the actual market rate rents in an area are. And so here in Reinbeck, the fair market rent is much, much lower than what things are on Zillow. So raising that to 345%, like the other towns and cities have done, would ensure that that doesn't exclude a lot of the people that you're trying to protect if you adopted this law. So those are the two things that are options if this is something that you're interested in pursuing. And I would encourage you to consider Good Cause, to speak with tenants and landlords in the community. It is a tool to increase community stability. It's about preventing price gouging and displacement, and that has benefits for everyone in the community. The Village of Reinbeck is about 44% renter, which might actually surprise people. There are a lot of renters here. And right now, they have very little protection if their landlord decides, you know, I don't like you, you can't stay, or, you know, I think that there's rich people coming up from New York City and they're going to pay a whole lot more, so I'm going to raise your rent 100% so that you leave and I can rent to somebody else. Right now, there's basically nothing stopping people from doing that, and this would be a protection that'll allow people who've been in this community for a long time and built their lives here to be able to stay. I'm happy to take any questions. Yeah.
Hi. Thank you for coming. What is the enforcement mechanism on this?
Great question. Like most tenants' rights, it is self-enforced essentially. So the way Good Cause works, we hope, and we are working hard as an organization that does community organizing, to ensure that people know their rights and therefore, what the way that it will play out is mostly negotiations around lease renewals. So a tenant who knows that they have some protections or what the unreasonable rent increase threshold is would be able to say to their landlord, like, actually, that's really unreasonable. There's a law that protects me. Can you come down a little on that rent increase so that I can stay here and continue to afford it? So that might be, we hope that that's the majority of the way that the law is used. What it actually is, is a defense in housing court. So if someone was taken to court for an eviction, they could raise Good Cause and say, you know, like that rent increase was totally unreasonable, that's why I couldn't pay it. Or, you know, they never gave me a reason for why they're evicting me, and I think it's because they just don't like people of my race. And the judge could decide, you know, you're right, they didn't have a good cause, and give them some protection against that eviction.
Okay, so it's not, so this is something that we adopt for our renters here in the village, but it's not something that the village is being expected to enforce or maintain or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. I would encourage the village to think about putting like--
Communication--
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly. Notifying tenants of their rights so that it becomes useful, but there is no expectation obligation to--
So if we don't, if we didn't do anything, and I'm saying that we should, don't they already have the rights because New York State passed the law or no?
No.
So we have to, in order for somebody to, if there's an eviction reason, say rent, if we don't have this law, the tenant doesn't have any recourse?
There are some recourse that tenants currently have in court, but very, very few. So yes, the state passed the law for New York City and allowed upstate municipalities to opt in, and so it does not apply automatically unless you pass the law.
Got it. And so who defines unreasonable?
So the law defines unreasonable as inflation plus 5% or 10%, whichever is lower. So for this year, and that inflation number, I think, is regionally based, for this year here, that's 8.45% is the threshold.
So anything higher than 8.45%? If I were negotiating with my landlord and he gave me a 15% raise, I could say, no, 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 let's bring it down to 8% because of this, because I'm a new renter.
Yeah. And he could say, no, and then he might end up in court. Or he could say, okay, but like really I had a bunch of costs this year, and like, could you do 10? And you might be able to say, yeah, I could do that, and I could stay here. Or you might say like, no, and try to fight it out in court.
Right.
And the burden is unfortunately on a tenant.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is basically gives tenants another tool to fight sort of predatory landlord behavior?
Exactly. And but rather than another tool, let's say a main tool. Tenants have very few tools right now to fight predatory landlords. This would really open up that possibility for them.
Okay.
Has there been any issues brought up in the towns or cities that have adopted this law? Have there been any backlash as a result of making a law available?
There've definitely been questions about, you know, who it applies to, what does it mean for landlords. I think a lot of towns are rightly concerned about the businesses of small landlords. I think the law actually does a pretty good job. You know, it depends on what your definition of a small landlord is. If you're someone who's renting out a basement unit in your house, the law is already exempting you. It's also like just not that unreasonable of a law. It's a pretty low bar. You can raise the rent up to like 8.5% every year without it ever being an issue. That is often plenty. And all of the reasons in the law for a good cause to evict, like if someone's not paying the rent, it doesn't protect them. It protects people who are following the lease and who might get evicted or just have their lease not renewed for no good reason. So currently, right now, in the Village of Reinbeck, a landlord could jack up the rent by any amount, and there's no limit whatsoever.
One year I had a 10% increase, and that's when the inflation was maybe a 3% or something. There was nothing I could do. I mean, I called, but there was nothing I could do.
So there isn't anything, if the landlord is making huge investment into the property, to allow them to recoup that? If it's, if they made substantial remodeling or whatever, I don't know. I'm not a renter, so I'm not sure.
So two things about that. One, like if the law applies if the tenant knows they have a right and they challenge what the landlord asked them for. If the landlord is asking them to pay more and the tenant doesn't know, then it's not going to affect the landlord in that case. But if the tenant did know that they had this right and they said, I can't pay a 50% increase, and the landlord said, well, I put in $100,000 in repairs, so I need to recoup some of it, and they ended up in court, the judge has discretion to say, like, your expenses went up, it makes sense for the rent increase to go up, and the judge could side with the landlord or come to some like reasonable compromise that they could both afford.
Has this been tested much operationally yet in terms of people in court and such like that? I'm just curious what you've seen or how it's going.
Yeah. So it was passed in April and applied immediately to New York City. So there are a couple of New York City cases that, like I can send articles around where folks are telling their story of how they've used the law, either just in negotiation or in housing court. It has been adopted in the last like two months basically by seven other municipalities upstate, so there's not, there has been a lot of time yet. I know of a case in Kingston where a tenant was being evicted for just no reason at all, and their housing lawyer was able to bring this up as a good cause, and they were able to stay in their apartment. The landlord just decided, you know, like, we want to rent to somebody else who can pay more and didn't renew the lease. So there are, it is starting to be used, but it's only been in effect for about a month or two in most places.
Yeah, there's a lot of good rational thinking that went into, I think, the law to help tenants, which I think should be done, you know, to give them the protection that they need as well. I'd be interested in following up with some of the communities like ours to see what they're experiencing and what they're doing.
I mean, you say here that, I mean, this is mostly cities, bigger cities that have adopted it, Hudson and then several other towns and cities are considering it. I mean, are we really the first village of 2,600 people who, I mean, our tenants are just as important as tenants in the cities, but, you know, are there any other smaller, like really smaller spots that are considering it, do you know?
The Village of Nyack passed it. Nyack is a slightly bigger village.
They're pretty big. They're big.
Socrates? Socrates is considering it.
Okay.
The Village of Patsville is introducing the law at their meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I think New Paltz is about to consider it also.
New Paltz is voting to adopt it tomorrow. I'm pretty sure they will. The town of Poughkeepsie has started having conversations about it, and the town of Fishkill actually, which is a little bigger, but--
Yeah, they're quite a bunch. A lot higher, as Lydia said, different tenant populations and different organizations doing tenant rental.
Yeah, but we, we still have an extraordinary number of landlords in the village who own a lot of properties. We're not all like, you know, two families with the owner on one side and then, you know, a tenant on the other side.
We have a lot of local landlords.
We do. We have a lot of local landlords.
I just want to maybe give a little bit of background why I asked her to come here for this presentation. So just bear with me because it's not going to sound applicable, but just to give you a flavor of what it means to be a renter, and I do not have a predatory landlord. I'm not saying that in the lease, but in my lease are things like, if there's a fire, I have to, I have to notify the landlord immediately. I can, may get three days written notice, and after the third day, if I have any property, any of my own property left in my apartment, they're just going to throw it out. If somebody comes in and fixes something but steals some money, they're not liable for anything that happens to any of their employees when they enter my apartment. Of course, I waive a trial by jury. There's a clause that particularly perturbs me because if, if, if I'm leaving, but it happens right after a holiday, so it could be a three-day holiday because you have a holiday, maybe a Friday and a weekend, I have to leave the apartment three days, three working days before the end of my lease, which means it could come out to be something like five or six days of rent that I would be paying, and I'm supposed to leave so they can get the apartment ready for the next person. I mean, there's even a clause here that I have to notify them in writing if I water my plants and I spill water. There's a clause if somebody stays three nights at my place, I have to record it. You know, it's just like, it's--
Right. A lot of big brother.
Yeah. It's just amazing. And they used to have a clause where they would paint every 10 years. Now they won't even paint. But if you ask to paint, they'll probably say no because I, when I moved in, the carpet was really old and it was very worn, and the manager kept telling me, you've got to, you know, the maintenance manager told me I should ask for a new carpet, but I was busy working, I didn't. And so when I finally asked to replace it, they, at that point, were putting in some tiles, something like this kind of tiling, which I, at my age, is just easier to clean than to go over, you know, do steam cleaning on a rug. So I asked for the tile and they said no. And then they, my brother offered, if they just buy whatever materials they want, he would put it in for nothing, and they still said no. And they ended up putting in a carpet, which they acknowledged they're going to rip out the minute I leave. They're just going to tear it out and put tiling in. So it's just, it's just a really, it took me a year and a half. They just finally sort of threatened me and said, either take the carpet or you're going to have to stick with your carpet.
Sort of, but is this law covering--
No, it doesn't, but I'm just saying--
So I don't understand the relationship.
Because I'm just saying, I'm just giving, because you keep saying you're not a renter. So I'm just trying to give people a flavor of what it's like to be a renter. So this is not really anything extreme, you know, based on the way, you know, our contract reads and the conditions that we live under. It's not really as extreme as it might sound to somebody who's not a renter and, you know, doesn't--
So sort of like all of that plus the insult of having a 15% lease increase?
Or just the fact that they could decide, well, you were really annoying about that carpet thing, we don't want you to live here anymore.
That's why I--
There's where it applies.
That's exactly why I wrote down, because more or less said, you either take the carpet or nothing. So I said, I think it's time to take the carpet.
Right.
I just want to follow up with a question. I think we only have, I think, one really large landlord that holds a lot of properties here, and we have a few owner-occupied, but we have, what I would say, are some small local landlords. And we don't have any sense about how this law is impacting that group because it seems like there's, you know, for the big boys, they can handle it, and for the little people, they're excluded, but we've got a group that's sort of in the middle. And, I mean, you know, they don't have a lot of properties that sort of costs over. Do we have any information about how that's working for this middle-sized, smaller group?
I think it's a little early to say that there's like data, but, you know, what the law asks for is not that unreasonable. Like if they have a good cause for eviction, they'll still be able to evict people. If they want to raise the rent to recoup their costs, they'll still be able to do so. If they want to raise the rent enough to turn a profit that year, they'll still be able to do so. So I really think that like if you're running a good business, you'll not really be affected by the law. It's really like this is a backstop for people who are being taken advantage of by the landlord.
If the village does choose to pass it, can we choose to un-pass it?
Yes.
Okay. Repeal it, I mean. Okay. So I mean, like, we have the ability to kind of test that out, and if we get a lot of squawks from, you know, from mid-market landlords, then we can have that conversation.
Would that come out through the process of adoption?
Yeah.
So that should come out.
Oh, I'm sure they will talk to us, yeah.
You'll get some squawks.
Yeah, I'll get some squawks, I'm sure.
Very good. Thank you very much. Very friendly.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
I'm sorry, one last question. I'm assuming you have some, you or the state or someone has like a, has like a model code for this?
Yes. Yeah, I didn't bring a model code.
That's okay. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, next on our agenda. Every year, we're required to file with the state a synopsis of our year-end report, which expires on May 31st of this year. So what we've been doing as a tradition for the Village of Reinbeck is presenting that review of how we ended the year. So this will be the year 2324, ending on 5/31. Just remember, it's not, it's not a synopsis of today, it's a report on where we were on 5/31/24. And to that, I'm going to introduce, and everybody should know, our treasurer, Karen McGlave.
My team. Sorry, a little technical.
We have a technical problem?
Yes.
It did work.
I just need Martina.
It's gorgeous wherever it goes.
It's, you know, it's here in the villages.
Yeah, it looks like, yes.
Marine Lake.
Bay of Fashion Park.
Yeah, that's all the Seven Sisters. I mean, that's on the right hand.
That's the Scars.
This is a college.
Oh, that's right.
That's the dam and then-- Anybody have a story to tell?
Somebody know where that is?
A song to sing?
Joe would have a story.
I was just going to say, you don't want to hear what I want to say.
Come on, Joe.
Oh, okay. I'll tell you a couple right here.
Okay. Joe, wait, Joe, I'm teasing, Joe. If you want to go into--
I was brought up, a bird in a hand is worth two in a bush.
And we'll have public comment here next, if you want to.
Next what?
After his presentation.
After this one?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah. Have a little break.
If I wanted to live in Manhattan, I would have, because that's good for Manhattan, you know, but not in my--
Okay, thank you for your patience. Challenges and successes describe this year's financial activity. There are challenges that turn into successes and successes that create challenges. We will start with the expenses. The departments have done an excellent job keeping their expenses within their budgets. The highway department focused on street maintenance and assisting the contractors with the ADA sidewalk and paving of Center Street. Due to an increase in legal and engineering activity, those lines went over budget. We anticipate the higher, we anticipated the higher fuel cost when we did this current year's budget and budgeted accordingly. The village purchased new workstations and upgraded to Windows 11. NYSERTA performed an HVAC FlexTech study on the village hall building. After much work and collaboration, the village's comprehensive plan is complete. So these were all, these were all projects that happened during the 2324 year. We responded to the increase in the cost of living and adjusted staff salaries. On the revenue side, property taxes remained under the 2% tax cap. The tax rate for 2324 was $2.77 per every thousand assessed value. The village has updated the contracts with the town of Reinbeck for fire protection and police support, increasing the amounts to meet the current cost to provide those services. This update is also taking place with the Reinbeck Central School District for our school resource officers. The planning and building and zoning departments-- The planning and building and zoning departments remain active and strong with revenues exceeding their budget lines. State aid and mortgage tax remained constant. However, state sales tax distributed by Dutchess County was up by $38,352. Interest earnings were up. Grants provided revenue needed to expedite projects that would have been difficult to fund. Okay, there's quite a few, but I think this is very important to, um, give kudos to the village board. Um, grant, this, these are grants and projects that are currently going on. The water system upgrade, the village board authorized a $6.5 million bond for our water system improvement, of which a bond anticipation note in the amount of $425,000 was issued and paid off during the year for engineering and design. We're working directly with New York State EFC on a short-term loan until completion of the project, then we will establish a long-term debt schedule for that. Uh, similar, the wastewater treatment plant and sewer upgrades, uh, the village authorized a $5.5 million bond for that with a bond anticipation note of $325,000 and that we are currently working on engineering and design on that project. The comprehensive plan, the village had secured $10,000 grant from Hudson Valley Greenway as well as a $10,000 grant from the Thompson Trust. The comprehensive plan is complete, the next step is implementation. Trees, uh, we continue to work with the tree commission on the remaining funds from the Frost Grant for tree removal, replacement and trees in the village right away. Center Street, the project to replace the water main, repair, mill and pave is complete and now, and was a coordinated, aided, coordinated effort of funds from ARPA, the Water Department and CHIPS reimbursement. Uh, we used the ARPA funds and the water fund, um, contributed 220,000 and we are applying CHIPS for 217,000. Compost facility, compost facility, the village received a New York State DEC grant for 200,000 to coordinate with the local farm, a compost facility that will benefit both the town and the village respite. EV community campaign, the $5,000 EV grant purchased electric power lawn equipment. Um, the FlexTech grant, the NYSERTA grant received paid for a FlexTech study to explore a more energy efficient solution to replace, um, the boiler at the village hall and install an HVAC system. Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant, we were awarded $100,000 to replace the sidewalk corners at Center and East Market Street with handicap accessible ramps, ramps as well as sidewalks in front of the village hall. This is complete and we are in the process of submitting for reimbursement. The Dutchess County MIG grant, we also received $147,000 for a new ramp to the fire station, a new fire rescue UTV, commercial washer and dryer and new light saving AEDs. This project also complete and we are submitting for reimbursement for that. The technology grant from New York State, we received $26,000 in to grant to upgrade the sound system and new desktop workstations and upgrade to Windows 11. Autism awareness, we received a matching grant of 20,000 for autism awareness. The autism committee raised the matching amount. The TAP grant, uh, New York State awarded us a $1.6 million with a committed village share of $400,000 to provide sidewalks and crosswalks to the schools. Police station energy efficiency grant, in addition to a grant for $10,000, we received one for $50,000 for energy upgrades to the police station. So a lot of them this year. Um, the police equipment, 230,000 was awarded to us from New York State for police radio communication equipment. Meridian barrier system, a grant we received from New York State Senator Hinchey's office for $86,000, along with $11,580 from the police capital account was to purchase barricades to enhance public safety. Asher Dam, uh, New York State DEC awarded us $46,000 to inspect and repair Asher Dam and an expected start date has not been determined as there still remain some questions and concerns from the board. So another example of challenges and successes is the village board's extraordinary efforts in securing grants and moving forward with projects that support, sustain and promote the Village of Reinbeck. So an essential part of the revenue picture is our investments in security. So the village has partnered with New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems and interest earned for the fiscal year, um, in the general fund totals $86,322. In the water fund, $12,837. And in the sewer fund, $33,800, or $985. This total interest of $133,144 was possible by maintaining a balance between the cash requirements of the operating funds and a balance to invest, generate a profit and provide liquidity. It is important to take advantage of the higher interest rates while we can. I open this report describing challenges and successes. We received $262,871 from ARPA for COVID relief. After a long drawn out application process for COVID recovery FEMA funds, we received $378,000. We, the village, also receive a stipend as lead participant of New York class board in the amount of $1,000 a month plus interest. These successes come with the challenge of an increase to our fund balance and the board's decision to allocate according to our fund balance policy. This chart illustrates the relationship between budget, revenue and expenses in each of the operating funds. The general fund looks good, finishing the year with revenues higher than expenses. The sewer fund is steady. The expenses in the water fund appear elevated as the water fund contributed $220,000 to the capital project of Center Street as well as, um, including the $425,000 bond anticipation note that was paid off. This is a picture of our long-term debt, the village's long-term debt. This, um, provides for planning future projects and purchases. Three bonds, three of our bonds mature in 2034, two more mature in 2038. And as you can see, that big one on the bottom is a 30-year water main project. In the near future, we will embark on a water system improvement project as well as a wastewater treatment plant and sewer upgrade project. In 2022-23 fiscal year, the village leased purchased new vehicles and equipment. This year, we did not, however, it is important to monitor and plan for future purchases. So each department is preparing a fleet schedule to stagger the purchases so payments will not inflate the budget on any given year. Okay, this shows our capital accounts. Um, part of the challenge, part of challenges and successes is maintaining capital accounts. The village has the above established accounts and a three-year history of each of those. As for the fire contract with the town of Reinbeck, the town's share of the unspent annual fire budget is allocated to the fire capital account. With the anticipation of large upgrade projects partially funded through the New York State EFC, the water and the sewer, um, balances will assist with the village's share of these financial commitments. So this is a pic, this shows the, um, fund balance analysis. At the fiscal year end of May 31, 2024, fund balances as above in the general water and sewer make the assumption of retaining a portion of the investments, 50% of them, and, um, maintaining the capital account balances. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $1,289,948, of which $541,337 is above the fund balance policy recommended, 25% of the subsequent budget. The water fund, 12492, and the sewer fund, 42069. It is important to note that fund balance is a net, net position and considers cash, receivables, payables, due-to-do forms, pending grants, transfers, and maintaining a reasonable fund balance provides stability and safety. So this graph illustrates, um, this is a fund balance history in the three different funds. And then the first line over there shows the 25% threshold that the board has established with their fund balance policy. This graph illustrates a decrease in the water and sewer fund balances, um, funds transferred out of the water and sewer, operating funds were for engineering and design work on the capital projects. Following up on the analysis of the Village of Reinbeck's fund balance and expanding on the discussion of challenges and successes, success has been an influx of revenue increasing the fund balance. Last year, the general fund was $152,540 over the fund balance policy. My little graph right here. Um, and then the year before was $216,814 over the fund balance policy. Being conservative by accounting to preserve 50% of the investments and retain the capital accounts, this year's amount is, as I said, $541,337. And I always like to go into what our policy states. Um, surplus of unassigned fund balance. Should unassigned fund balance of the general fund exceed the maximum 25% range, the village will consider such fund balance as a surplus for a one-time expenditure, one-time expenditures that are non-recurring in nature and which will not require additional future expense outlays for maintenance, additional staffing or other recurring expenditures. So in conclusion, although the village finances are currently favorable, there remain challenges to consider. The labor force is changing, finding and retaining good employees has been and will be a challenge, aging infrastructure and equipment, cost and availability of supplies, equipment and services. We maintain adequate fund balance, we continue to monitor expenses and budget responsibly, and we're always looking for safe viable sources of revenue that in turn stabilizes and keeps the tax rate reasonable. And this is a team, this is a team effort. So 2023-24 year's challenge was adaptability, the quality of being able to adjust to new conditions. So moving forward, the 24-25 year's charge will be balancing challenges and successes with planning, preparation for our future growth and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So many. Yes. We're, I've got a bunch. Um, we had a whole analysis done about our fees in the water and wastewater districts, um, whether or not they're appropriate and how to make sure we're raising them piecemeal so we don't slam people with huge increases when we run into trouble. Um, where are we with that?
So the last one we implemented was a dollar increase in the previous year.
In 2324, 2223?
2223.
2223.
Right. And then, I don't exactly remember the chart, but it then factored in the water project and as we started carrying debt into that, there was a progression of minor increases going out in time. We could bring that chart back, we have it.
I think we decided in our last budget season that we didn't yet know what that long-term debt was going to look like, so we, for now, punted on raising the, but we should revisit that once we know that long-term debt.
Yeah, that's exactly it. We, um, we're just kind of getting started on the two projects, so, um, we're going to kind of take a look at where we are and what we need to do.
And just to remind you, do you not have a fund balance policy for water?
Water, yeah, I know, we did that on purpose because their expenses are sort of so massive. Right. Um, uh, the other question that I had that ties into, well, I'll ask the first one. Um, for our long-term debt, uh, there's some street paving in it, there's, um, two fire trucks, um, there's the police building, which obviously we won't have to rebuild, so when that falls off, we won't need to replace it. But, um, I mean, the goal with long-term debt is always to figure out a way to keep it steady, um, so having huge cliffs or huge, huge cliffs up or down is not great. Um, but some of this seems like it's going to cycle off and we don't need to replace it with anything unless we're going to be replacing it with sort of water, wastewater additional debt. So what are you seeing with our long-term debt sort of forecasting? Like, once the police falls off, what's going to replace, you know, are we going to sort of stay at this 200, 250 range?
I don't want to speak for any, any, you know, any particular department.
Right.
I mean, water's self-sufficient, sewer's self-sufficient, so those are their own entity, but I do think we do have a large fire apparatus in the future.
Yeah, and I know that the fire department thinks about them sort of once every five years with a useful life of 20-ish years. And so when one comes on, another one comes off. And so like they're doing a good job of kind of managing their fleet in a way that has this be a steady state for us.
Can I also interject?
Sure.
One thing that we, has been on our radar, but we haven't considered yet because of where we are, is the condition of our highway garage.
Got it, okay.
So there's going to be opportunities.
Yep, so once the police department comes off.
You know, once we get out into the 2030 range, you know, six years from now.
Yep.
You know, in anticipation of planning, there's, there's opportunity for lots here.
Yeah, and the complaint actually speaks to the highway garage because it's also a corrupt guy.
Right. And we will be adding, um, the $400,000 that were in service for the TAP grant too. I mean, that's, yeah, for the TAP grant.
Right, that's going to be a ban or, yeah.
First a ban and then.
And that'll roll into long-term debt.
Yeah, right. That's coming.
Okay. Um, and then, you know, we've historically purchased our, like our municipal vehicles, not the big guys, but the little guys, um, with leases. Um, and that was great when interest rates were at or near zero. Um, that's going to be a problem moving forward. And so with the fund balance being so well above our current 25% sort of maximum threshold, um, there's like a few conversations that are going on in my head at the same time. One is perhaps we could plow a bunch of that money into a capital reserve account for vehicles and that way we can just purchase vehicles straight out instead of having to lease them. So that saves us interest on that while we can earn interest on the capital reserve. Um, but the other question is, you know, our three-year review of the fund balance is, um, you know, it has been above our 25% threshold, so do we need to change our fund balance policy or do we need to start spending more of it?
I think that's definitely a board. I just, I think that's really, I think that's like a whole nother conversation. I mean, I was reporting it, but I, I think that the board really, because I know you probably have an. have an idea about it, you know, everyone probably has an idea about it.
And I think we should entertain a discussion in the future here very soon about how to manage a fund balance policy. I think our fund balance policy is good, and a lot of Mr. Palley's do not have fund balance policies, and they do that particularly because then they don't have to have...
Right, then they don't have to, yeah.
But we did it for good financial soundness, and it's a good thing to have, it's also a good thing to say, we've done a good job managing our budget, and we have some money, and we should just definitely entertain, because I can think of lots of places where we could make one-time capital investments into improvement. And now's not the time, but I think we should bring that forward at some time in the near future, and have a board discussion about that.
Well, it was just, it was just interesting to see the five-year municipal lease purchase chart, because it's about $120,000 a year, and we are spent, we are paying interest on that, and if we have the ability to just plow a bunch of money into an interest-bearing account for our vehicles, and make sure we restock that account every year, but then we could just buy our vehicles instead of paying someone else interest for them.
Does that fit into the definition of non-recurring expense? You do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it?
Yeah, I guess we have gotten where we have needed these vehicles in these different areas.
Yeah, we waited so long that we had to buy these vehicles, we didn't have the money for them, and it worked because we were a really favorable interest...
Definitely, I definitely think that's a good plan going forward.
I have a long re-list of stuff, I'm sure you do, we all do. Let's tee up a discussion sometime at one of these meetings.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Karen, thank you.
Okay. Public comment. If anybody here would like to make a public comment, please, raise your hand, acknowledge you, come forward. Joe, your hand was up first, please come forward. Please let me your comments in three minutes or less.
It's hard to tell an Irishman to have a short story. No, it's pretty short. I always say thank you for everybody, for everything that's done. I just want to compliment that. And the young lady that was here speaking first, I think it was great that you brought her here.
Excuse me, Joe, would you like to get a little closer to the microphone, please?
I think it was a tremendous idea, but I just want to say, tenants' power to control a lease never, you know, was an occurrence of being a landlord. My family's been landlords for years, I know many families have been landlords for years, but I don't know anybody that had a 50% raise in Rhinebeck. We would have heard of that, because we all know each other, and, you know, we care for each other, and that's ridiculous, if someone ever had a 50% increase, you know? So we can barely keep up as landlords because of what happened with COVID. I mean, usually 1.5% to 2% inflationary rate is decent, and people can survive with that, and that hasn't happened. The gas tanks and whatnot, that's over 30% increase since COVID has occurred. So that, that point, and also, a lease is a lease. If you sign a lease, you know, in a lease, if you're a landlord, you're going to have the terms of what percentage it's going to raise, whether it's, you know, 2.5% per annum or it's 5% per annum. You sign it, you sign it, and it's, it's just, and there's another thing that's really, you guys have enough things to do than to take care of, you know, some person that wants to pull a carpet out of there, you know? But there's going to be a line out the door, you better make a canvas out there so people don't get wet in the rain. So, and also, we need more volume to deal with the inflationary rate, and that's a whole other subject, you know, because we've been trying to afford to have a parking garage in Rhinebeck, and that's been tried to be brought forth since 1979, since I've been around in the village. And then another point, we have had tenants for over 10 years, so we're treating our tenants pretty nice. So I would think if I was a tenant, which I have been when I was in college, if I didn't like my landlord, I would break the lease, and just say, "Look, it's unfair, and I'm going to leave." But my, my family has had friends renting their whole lives. We've had people come in, and they've been there for 10, 15 years, you know, since they were in business. And going back to a landlord's point of view, you know, the old saying, a bird in the hand is worth doing a bush. I mean, if someone's going to come out of the metropolitan region, and they're going to, they're going to charge them 50% more, I don't believe it. I'd rather take care of the people that have been taking care of us for years. And, you know, a lease has a rate of increase in annual part, and it's under an agreement. And if a tenant does not want to pay after three months, and this has happened one time to us, who's going to pay us? Because they don't have any money. We're going to make a law for that, and you guys are going to be in charge of that and go collect it. I mean, we had one time it happened, and Herman Teigen, the local attorney, he got him out in a month, or in two months. So I think we're opening up a can of worms. And, you know, I know Eleanor, I'm really sorry that you've had such a terrible manager, but I know a manager that manages the most apartments in Rhinebeck. He was a gentleman in high school, and he still is. His dad and mom were friends with my dad and mom, and, you know, this is Rhinebeck, you know, it's not meant that. Thanks, guys.
I just want to say, I did not, I did not mean to imply I have a terrible manager, but it's not really what I said. I think you can believe it.
You have enough to plug it in.
Just a question, just a question, clarify that. Is this law applicable just to residential, or does it apply to commercial as well?
Just residential. I think Kingston is looking into a special for commercial tenants, actually, but the law, the state passes just residential.
Rachel, I saw your hand up.
Hotel record.
Sorry, we're trying to go wireless, and we're going to get there someday. I apologize, but please be careful.
So I'm Rachel Kavel.
I'm Michael Casana.
We just, we just want some clarification from the board, we're still confused, we've been writing about this issue for quite a long time. We're now, particularly now since Ruby's has left Chestnut Street, we are the most heavily impacted, directly abutting residential area contiguous to the commercial district, in which there has been a permitted parking area for 20 years designed to deal with a catastrophic problem that I personally lived through. Michael wasn't living in the area yet, but others have, and, you know, we're all, we're not all here on the force tonight because we all have jobs, we're not always available to come, so it's a lot of labor to keep coming back to these meetings, as you know. But now that the comprehensive plan has just summarily removed, as we understand it, the permitted parking, leaving us vulnerable to the, I mean, genuine, like, when the permitted parking was in place, it was not just a convenience, as Gary knows, quite, he knows from personal experience too, I mean, it was like, we couldn't get out of our driveways, we couldn't drive down the street, there was a fire traffic problem. You know, there is a very sui generis problem that we face, and we don't have any confidence any longer, and with all due respect to all of you, that you guys have listened to what we have been saying. And now we are, you know, we are, we have faith in Ms. Labby, who has been corresponding with us faithfully, Slavy, I'm sorry, but we just, we don't know anymore. And it's very scary to be living in a situation where at any moment, a protection has been afforded us that has, is the difference between our being able to live in our houses and our not, and to not have heard anything. And I have written in, sorry for getting just a tiny bit, but the amount of ink that has been spilled on my computer, let alone mine, is just, is ridiculous. I could have written in The Great American, I could have written in Stanning Way at this point, and it's just like radio silence. So not, not from you, Lydia, but, but from everybody else on this board, but, and we recognize that you operate as a board, and you vote in block, so we just want to know what's going on. That's important. And nobody has to respond to us tonight, but we are here enforced to ask what's going on.
It's no problem. So the comprehensive, the fact that we adopted the comprehensive plan on September 24th, thank the baby Jesus, the comprehensive plan in and of itself is not enforcement, it's not law.
We understand.
Yeah, so it's just a plan. So anything that comes out of the comprehensive plan has to be passed, has to be created, has to be passed, has to be vetted, has to probably go through SEACER, like, there's all sorts of stuff that we have to do in order to do anything that the comprehensive plan has recommended. So when it comes to the Livingston Street parking situation, we started a conversation with the two of you and your neighbors, Gary and I started a conversation, the two of you and your neighbors, yeah, in February, and we are hoping to be able to continue that conversation as to what to do about your street. I fully appreciate your concerns, I think we all fully appreciate your concerns, I don't want to speak for anyone, but I think we do. But at the same time, we're trying to balance this conundrum that we're facing. So we're not going to summarily remove your parking, your parking permit situation without a conversation with you about it, and without us needing to pass a law and to do something in the public that, of course, we would inform you about. So I don't think you need to lose sleep over this for the moment, because we haven't done anything, we haven't had that follow-up conversation, we were waiting for the comprehensive plan to complete its work. So we're happy to restart that conversation with you in order to figure out what the best way to move forward on that particular recommendation is. I'd be very grateful if you decided not to have that conversation until November, because I'm in desperate need of a vacation.
We're all extremely busy, I believe that.
Yeah, but, yes, I can personally assure you that I want...
Well, I don't want your personal assurance, I guess we want the board's assurance, and I also got my goal...
Rachel, I just want to say, I hear you, and I've heard you, and I understand the situation. My goal as a board member would be to try to come up with a solution that might even improve the situation there.
Well, I'm glad, I'm grateful that you're, that you've heard us, because, yeah, I would not have any clue that anybody has heard us except for Lydia, honestly.
I'll just throw a little bit, and then, I mean, I think the crux of it is that the comprehensive plan committee, we don't feel like there was enough engagement with us to even put that in the comprehensive plan. So we appreciate your discussions with us, but you guys are a separate entity somewhat to that comprehensive plan. Now that it's part of the plan, I think what we are looking for is that next conversation that you're talking about.
Great, yeah, that's true.
I appreciate that.
Rachel, that, we've had, you and I've had many conversations.
We have, we have.
So there's, it hasn't been really radio silence, but...
No, no, but I mean, since the comprehensive plan, we only had one lovely human being to deal with, but...
The promise that we made to you was that we would engage you before moving forward, but we needed to understand how the comprehensive plan, I'm just repeating what Lydia has already said, and so we're not ready, because we're, and, and when that time comes, we're a community, we're a community of people, we're a community of residents that live here. We all live, work, and are here together, so you're not going to be left out. I'm not going to predict what the conclusion is.
I know I'm asking predictions, but we...
So, please, as I've mentioned to you before, please have patience, and we will...
I think patience we have.
And we will try to get through this conundrum that we are trying to balance out it, and that's all, that's all I can ask.
And I think in terms of the silence, Lydia's the point person for the comprehensive plan, so we've kind of been working through Lydia and letting her, rather than each one of us responding, making statements that we can't back up because we're only one person on the board, so I think that's...
This started long before the comprehensive plan, and we've had engagement about this for a very, for a long time, and we're all trying to, so we said, "Fine."
Thank you.
So I'm asking your diligence to...
I appreciate, I feel much better seeing all these faces, Michael.
And to, to your point, like, we also understand some of the hurdles that are in the way.
Absolutely.
Of course, we're all reasonable, we're all reasonable people.
I mean, to Joe's point, we're, you know, we're Rhinebeck residents, like...
And that's what I just said, so thank you.
Let's work it out.
And, and, and we'll, no promises, but...
Thank you.
You won't be left on the street without knowing where we're going and how we're going.
Rachel, Rachel, they like you because they didn't set a three-minute timer.
We like that.
Yeah, you got six, okay, that's true.
Sorry, any other comments? Howie?
I just have a question for, you're not a state official, right?
No.
Okay. I'm a small landlord, just one single-family home.
Your name, Howie, just might have hurt, we all know you, but...
Howie Trout, T-R-A-U-D-T.
I got it.
So my question is, is there a base rent for like a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment that a landlord would go buy? I mean, you're just going by like raising rents from what they currently are?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if somebody moves out of an apartment, and they want to raise, the landlord wants to raise the rent double, or whatever you're saying, 50%? If they did that, would they be in trouble?
So this law doesn't change that at all? You'd still be able to...
No, like, so it's only for current tenants?
Yeah. It's not renovation, it doesn't work the same way.
Okay.
The primary thing here, Howie, is the eviction laws, right? So that you just didn't like the color of a person's skin, or the fact that they complained all the time, they have a recourse to be able to do that. And that's important, to give them some protection that if they can't do that. So I understand that, that portion of it.
Yeah, I understand, I just, I rent my house for a certain amount of money, I know I can get a lot more, but I'm just trying to figure out how you go by the, what the rents should be.
The law doesn't change how much you can charge between tenancies, it just gives the current tenant the power to say, like, "Hold on, that increase is a little too high, can you come down a little bit?"
Right. Okay, that's basically it.
Thanks, Howie. Anybody else? Becky?
Hi, I'm Becky Tyer, and I live in Village Green. My husband and I, after being homeowners for 40-something years, are renters for the first time three and a half years ago when we moved to Rhinebeck, and we love it. A few questions came to mind during the presentation, thank you very much, very informative. I wonder how any rules on landlords would fall in line with the efforts of the comprehensive plan to encourage more rentals in the community. And secondary, I couldn't find, I did a little bit of research before coming here, I couldn't find much information about other small communities that have implemented something like this. But I do come from another state, and I will never stand before any of you and say, "This is how it was done anywhere else," particularly the terrible state that I came from. However, I did see where there were perhaps unreasonable or perhaps reasonable and misinterpreted rules that were put on landlords, and the landlords turned their rentals into condominiums. I'm not sure economically if that makes sense right now, because renting, you know, we have very little occupancy rate here, so I don't know if that would be reasonable, but I know that when we live in a complex that's probably the largest landlord in the town, I'm guessing, in the village, if it turned into condos, there'd be a lot of us looking really quick for where to rent. And then, back to the idea of how it applies to the comprehensive plan, sorry, Lydia, I'm looking at you. If and when Lauren and I were able to become homeowners in Rhinebeck, we would probably look for something that had a duplex situation or an ADU that we could rent out to enable us to be able to afford the property. And so if, if this would impact anything like that, I would want to know more about it. So I just hope that those are our ideas that maybe you guys would get answers to, because we certainly look to you as the experts to make the decision whether or not this is right for Rhinebeck or not.
Thank you. Actually, that begs a question. Do you consider ADUs owner-occupied units?
Yes.
Okay. Because sometimes, according to some laws, say that they are... Okay. Because sometimes according to some laws say that they are owner-occupied and sometimes they say they aren't, like, if they're in a separate building, do you know what I mean?
I'm pretty sure that under this law, they would be considered owner-occupied. It might be something that like gets tested in the court at some point. I don't think it has been, but I think it is.
Is that something that we could clarify in the model in, in the law if we wanted to?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you for asking that question because that's, the ADU question is always a little bit about, is this in the same building or not? As it works with the comp plan, that's an interesting question because the comp plan speaks a lot to income-restricted units. You know, 10% here, 20% there, depending on where and what and how. But it really seems like this particular law isn't, so income-restricted units would be exempt from this because they are under a different regulatory scheme, right? Right? So it wouldn't impact income-restricted units. But it would impact year-over-year rent increases for non-income-restricted units that aren't owner-occupied or an ADU. All right, I'm learning this on the fly. Okay.
It also doesn't apply to anything built in the last 30 years.
Right. Okay. What if the house was built in the 1800s but the ADU was built last year?
The way the state law was written, it's actually a late year of the certificate of occupancy, which is really annoying, and it needs to be amended to say the original certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
Hopefully that gets fixed in the next legislative session.
Okay. Okay, interesting. Okay, all right, so there's more homework to be done.
Yeah, there's more, so that's a more missed conversation.
No, I know, I know it's been a more missed conversation, but you know what, while we have the expert in the room, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, moving on. Treasure report.
Okay. The tax collector's account ended the month with $525,537.51. The general fund ended the month, ended the month with $180,175. The sewer fund ended the month with $76,738.8. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $148,806.4. In the water fund, $57,844.45. In the sewer fund, $43,761.90. And escrow bills total $4,342.58. The grant plus the police contribution for the barricades totals $96,157.54. We paid a bond for the police station in the amount of $56,750. Water and wastewater, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, $4,510. Bond EFC payment for the water main project, $131,282.35. And a short-term EFC interest payment on the current project of $3,075.57.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
No.
Or just pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
It is...
Approve vouchers as presented.
Approve vouchers as presented.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to water and sewer. October 24th quarterly bills for the water, $210,633.58. In the sewer, $102,144.31. Those are due November 27th, 2024. The monthly bills for them total $31,811 in the water and $40,683.44 in the sewer, and those are due October 30th. So I just wanted to go in, there's a little more in the back page there. The water bills were normally due on the 25th. So with the new system, we really don't need that many days before the end of the month because it's kind of complicating yet where between that period, if I run the billing, it comes out as an overage for the next month. So I'm asking the board to establish the due date three days prior to the last day of the month for the monthlies, and then for the quarterlies, have it do the second month three days before the last day of the month for the quarterlies. So it's consistent to three days before the last day of the month, whether it's the 30th or the 31st. And then the quarterlies give them two months because it's just really hard for Chrissy to get the monthlies and the quarterlies and all of that that's coming in that's not ongoing payments within one month. So just kind of asking for that policy.
So for the quarterly bills, you would send them out on, say, like, January 1st, but they wouldn't be due until three days before March 1st?
Three days before February 28th.
For the quarter?
The second.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay, yep. Like, so three days before February 28th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go into this question. I make a motion to approve the receivables for the water bills on three days before the end of the month.
Second.
Now discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Karen.
So I'm working with MuniLink to change to postcard billing to save on postage and bill prep. So again...
Excuse me, do you have the example with you?
I don't have it with me, but I do want to make sure that we do an education for everyone before we do it. I'd like to try and do it by the January billing, but I want to make sure we get it on Facebook and get it out there because they're the size of a postcard, so I don't want people to just throw them away. So more to come on that one. Adjustments were signed off by Mayor Bassett and are presented for approval.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and as, as I, I talked a little bit in my report about capital accounts. So currently we have separate accounts for equipment and capital expenses separate from the operating budgets and the operating funds. I asked the board to consider consolidating some of them, maybe the parking and parks and rec or the parking, parks, rec, and sidewalks, and then setting up reserves accounts by resolution for the fire, streets, and police. But I just wanted to introduce it. I gave everyone with my report two samples of two reserve resolutions. They're samples from New York State Comptroller's Office. So capital reserves funds are generally funded with budgetary appropriation. Revenue is not required by law to be paid into any other fund or account. For example, transfers which are ones that you budgeted from unexpected balances, existing appropriations, and surplus of money. So Lydia, that's when you were talking about the surplus of fund balance. So yes, you can use that. So I just wanted to, if anybody has things, just let me know. And I wanted to just let the board look at those legal reserves and then we'll put that together for next board meeting.
Is, is your goal to streamline?
It's to streamline and also, right now, we had set up many years ago our capital accounts kind of...
As bank accounts but not actual reserves?
As loosely, kind, well, kind of. So they're capital accounts so that the board had the latitude to maybe come and make a decision if they needed to spend them. But I think we need to look into, there's two different types. So if you want to take a look at that, we'll go through them and then maybe next board meeting we'll kind of come up with what the board wants to do with those. And then just to finish off on, for the Dutchess County block grant, I submitted reimbursement for $100,000 there and for the mid-grant, $79,000 there. And then I just submitted for chips for the $217,000. And there are no budget amendments this month, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
So a question, so you want us to think about this and then have a discussion and potentially approve it next month?
And pass the resolutions for the reserves next month.
Okay, so should we talk about it this month or should we talk about it?
Well, you can just kind of look at it.
Let's, let's, let's take some time and think about this. Nothing we need to do today. It's not hindering anything today.
No.
We are treating our capital funds pretty closely as a reserve fund in action.
Right.
But going forward, we should reconsider. And there's some actions going on that I think will help influence us in the near future before we make these decisions.
Yes.
Roger.
Yep.
Specifically about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Purchase question?
I have some purchase requests for the board to consider. I'd like to start with a Marist collaboration item because Professor Alguzine is here from Marist. If you, if the board has any questions about this purchase, I'm proposing this as a single source. It's specialized scientific...
Soul source, yeah.
Yeah, soul source, sorry.
Yep.
Soul source, it's specialized scientific equipment for our Marist collaboration. The idea is to have equipment that will be dual-use really at the wastewater treatment plant. They're already monitoring rainfall as part of their process, and so they would be able to use this as well. So the Marist students very kindly put together this quote. We did budget $5,000 for this. So I would like to make a motion to purchase from Campbell Scientific the equipment for $4,577.35.
Second.
All right, so first off, there's taxes in here.
Yeah, we can take those.
We don't pay taxes.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to go back to the supplier and say, sorry, no, no tax.
They actually asked us.
Pardon?
They asked us, Gary. I got an email from Campbell Scientific saying, wait a minute, we're probably not going to be charging tax.
Correct, good.
So there's probably a form...
I'm glad we're on, everybody don't want that.
Yeah. We're, I think there's a form you have to provide.
So Karen's going to provide us with the tax report.
Perfect, thank you.
Cool.
All right, so I'd like to amend the motion to approve this, this quote minus taxes.
$4,233.47.
That's right.
What did it say again?
$4,233.47.
Discussion.
Is the data, how is the data sharing between the department and Marist? How's the data sharing?
So the data coming off of the logger will go through the village's Wi-Fi at the site. So you have, you have rights to the data because it's going over your network. But we, we make the data publicly available as well for the residents of the village through our application. But we, we can certainly share the data anytime. And I've been talking with the folks at the wastewater treatment plant. They are very interested in having access to this data as well for obvious reasons.
So what they do is they keep a log. They're just electronically keeping the log.
I'm just making sure, right.
Yeah, so it's just that it's being shared.
So I'm sure the connection was there.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Professor.
Good night.
Good night, Chris.
Okay, next up, let's move to food scrap collection dumpster. Okay, so this will be paid for through the DEC grant. I tried to get a third quote, but they didn't get back to me in time. So I would like to make a motion to approve the task order from Merrill for $10,865 plus freight of $850 for a total of $11,715.
Is that without tax? Before I second it.
It is without tax.
What is this for?
This is for the compost program. This is for the collection dumpster.
Okay. And second...
So just, we'll, let's approve it, then we'll move to discussion. Second, second. All right, now let's move into discussion. So...
Do we need to wait to get a third quote?
No. If you, if you, if you try, in this case because of the amount, you know, she made a good faith effort to get three quotes, and so we're, we're inclined.
Okay.
Just everybody, where, where? This is 500 buckets.
No, sorry.
Oh, you changed this one?
This is for the, the collection dumpster.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was taking a long one. All right, sorry. Yeah, so there's how, there's how many are behind?
This is one collection.
One, one collection bucket that goes in the container.
Right. This is the one that's compared with the footlift truck.
And you want to get it from what company? Which one did you go?
Merrill.
Merrill.
Is this something that's rentable? Because we're, so now we'll be responsible for all the maintenance and all the wear and tear on it. Karen, I mean, I don't know.
There, this is made specifically to order for this purpose.
Ah, okay.
So it's kind of a specialized, it's not something that's like readily available, you know.
Okay, so it's not a non-standard.
It's made to go work in the container.
It's made to be compatible, compatible with Michael's footlift truck. And it's made specifically for food waste, so it's, you know, not going to leak. It has doors that are lockable to keep out critters.
It's special.
It's special, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Any other questions? I guess for clarity, everybody knows where we're putting this? I don't know if everybody's aware of the position that it's going in.
Yep, it's going to be positioned in the main municipal parking lot by the farmer's market shed. And Kyle's measured it out, and we have a spot for it.
How are we preventing people from throwing their trash in it?
It's going to be locked.
Oh, so people who have access will have to...
And people who registered for the program will have a code, John Moss.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to light it and trail camera it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. How's it going, by the way?
I know, it's happening.
I know. Like, is Michael under construction or?
The, the water service and electricity is already put in at the site. Tomorrow, we're having a meeting with a nonprofit that works with DEC regarding training and consulting about how to improve composting sites. And I'm hoping we might even be able to get that consulting for free.
Wow.
So yeah, progress is happening. The, really, the timeline for launching the program is contingent on this container being fabricated for us, which is about a six to eight week turnaround. So that's really like the, the limiting factor.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, let's move, now let's move on to tails.
Do we vote? Do we vote?
I thought we did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And my third item here is for two pallets of these specialized food scrap pails. They're lidded. They're specifically designed for collecting food scraps. This also will be paid for by the DEC grant. And the idea is you register for the program. If you need this, this wooden bucket, you can get one. If you want to use your own bucket, you have something that you like, that's fine. Keep using what you're using. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the quote from SureClose compost fails for $3,570. That's including shipping. I did provide a couple other quotes, but this is the, the one that is kind of the standard for municipal composting programs who are doing this type of work because it's specifically designed for, for food waste and it's dishwasher safe.
How much is the volume?
So...
600 pieces.
So I'd like to make a motion to, anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
She already did.
Purchase, second.
Vanessa already made the motion.
She did, all right. So, discussion.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
How big is the pail?
So what we learned in the pilot, pilot is we, we gave people five-gallon buckets, but many people actually said that's too big to make. So this bucket is, I think it's...
1.9 gallons.
Yeah, 1.9 gallons. So it's, it's more of a manageable size. You can sit on your kitchen countertop. And, and people seem to really like it.
Do they only get one?
Yeah.
So you're going to sign them out to anybody who wants one, and that's it? They get one?
Yeah.
If they lose it, break it?
They can always buy their own. Part of the, this is really part of, it's sort of like a rite of passage, it's an initiation to the program. Thank you for taking part. Here's your bucket. Here's your instructions. Thank you for taking part, here's your bucket, here's your instructions. People feel like, it feels more real if you give them something and it's kind of a, like, a hooray moment. But people can use whatever bucket they actually want. They're, they're not required to use this bucket, it's just.
But they're getting it for free.
Yeah, it's part of the, the marketing budget of, of this grant.
So I was wrong, 600 buckets. And have you spoken to Kyle about storage?
Yes.
Because we need a place to put the buckets.
Yes, yes, yes.
And.
So the, the large inventory will be at the highway garage and we'll keep a stash here in the shed. And so we'll be giving those out.
Who, and who gives them out?
The Cleanse Department Task Force and myself.
Okay. So you will maintain that inventory list until.
Yes. All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Martina.
Okay, fire tires. Yes, so the last few meetings, we put this on the agenda to surplus the fire department rims and tires. I have received one bid that I will open. Okay, from Richard Deneau, I bid $900 for the Michelin XD N2. And for both the tires on the aluminum rims.
The tires on the rims?
So the whole bike?
Yeah.
Yes. Tires mounted on aluminum rims, I don't know if that's how, I'm assuming that's how they come.
I make a motion to approve the bid. Second, second, Rick, any discussion? We're not delivering.
No, they will be picked up.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, water treatment plant, current project. We've mentioned this several times, a water treatment plant and a wastewater treatment plant. As you've heard in the treasurer's report, we're moving forward with this. But we have a very tight schedule and our schedule is slipping. And it's slipping because we're not hearing from DEC or DOH. They're making procedural changes, just so you're aware, there's conversation going on back and forth between engineering and those two departments. But it's all procedural, there's nothing in terms of the scope of the project that's changing. It's just that they haven't completed their review, which has forced us to move the dates out. For the water treatment plant, we were hoping to get to a very significant point of, you know, bid award by July of this year. And now that's February of next year. And we won't, construction completion is moved out from August of 2025 to March of 2026. And it's a similar story for the wastewater treatment plant. So no issues, it's just that we need these state departments to move ahead with the documentation. But with that, I've been in conversation with the engineering department. These firms that bid on these projects like to bid on a project by year end, so they can set their schedules for next year. It's very important for us to consider thinking about moving this project forward so we don't miss that opportunity when all the major companies are out there looking for their source of revenue and their project for next year to move forward to bid them this year. So the right, you know, in my conversation, there is nothing to stop us from, even though we don't have DEC and DOH approval. There's no impediment for us not to go out for bid by not having that. The only issue is we cannot ask for money from the organization until we have their approval. So.
Wait, we, we can't ask for money from who?
From the, from our EFC.
Got it, okay.
That's the only place we're asking money for.
Oof, okay.
So. So what I'd like to make a motion for, I'd like to make a motion to move ahead with the bid schedule for both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant as follows. To change the schedule to go for advertisement the week of August 14th.
October 14th?
Uh, excuse me, October 14th. Bid opening December 19th. Bid award then by January 31st. And then bonds and insurance and contracts and everything will follow by March 5th with 2020, in 2025. Just note that we would need the approvals before we can do the bid award.
Are we incurring any expenses before this happens? Because.
No.
Okay. Because I, I would worry about EFC covering that if, if we were incurring expenses.
Yeah.
We are not, according to the engineering firm, we are not incurring any expenses to go out and do the advertising, except for our advertising.
But that should be covered by EFC, all of that, the advertising.
I can follow up on that, but I'd like to make a motion then pending that we get approval for it, to cover that expenses.
They probably will, but yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, how much is advertising?
So just, I made a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Now let's talk.
Okay, so the issue is, and this is similar, the top grant, any expenses incurred for the grant award are on the municipality and are not billable back to.
And grant, like I said, I'd like to make that and then we'll let we.
But my question is, if advertising is $200, if it keeps us on track, shouldn't we just do it?
Yeah, one, he, Claire's question was, if advertisement is $200, would we not still proceed with doing this?
It may not be reimbursable, but if it's $200, $500, it's worth staying on time.
Yeah, right.
Even if they're not going to.
I agree with that. And by the way, Gary, is the, um, schedule that you just laid out for us the one that's in the revised column?
In the revised column is the current schedule, yes.
The one that you just suggested that you would like to do?
No, 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 no. No, what I just suggested for you would be a change to revised dates. Because we would go out where it said bid advertisement, it says 11/24, we would now do bid advertisement in October. So I'm recommending a change to.
Got it.
What they had originally in our, in my last meeting with them.
Okay.
On the status update, I'm trying to pull the schedule back to take advantage of the time we associated with getting the bids out.
It was October 14th?
October 14th for advertisement. Bid opening December 19th. Bid award January 31st of 2025.
I mean, that still keeps us sort of within that revised frame, timeframe, it just.
Like a month.
It just accelerates it a little bit.
Well, what I'm trying to do is meet the year-end schedule for contractors to be able to get their bids in.
I just have a question.
Prove who do we have?
Wait, Karen first.
That's all, I just have a question, is the water and wastewater both going to be done at the same time?
Yes.
This was for, are you talking about water?
And wastewater.
Both of them.
Both of them. So I said, the bid schedule for both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant.
I see, okay.
They're in, they're both in the same ballpark of timing.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just trying to follow everything.
Yeah.
So if we don't get approval, do we have to re-bid or?
We will eventually get approval, because we're in, the only thing that we're going through, Eleanor, right now is the procedural kind of stuff.
No, I get that.
Or the scope.
So we get that, but then do we have, you know, if it drags out a ways, do we, the question is.
Yeah, if it were to drag out significantly into the year, then yes, we would have to, because there is a time limitation on, on the bid. Because we would like to do bid award, right, by Jan, by the end of January.
So, yeah, if we can't, then we, if we miss that, then we, the bid kind of expires and we have to redo it.
I'm not sure if we have to redo it, we got the word with EFC to make sure we can do, we can move ahead yet and keep the bid contract.
So speaking of EFC, we're currently getting a 0% loan on the wastewater stuff.
Wastewater, 0%.
Wastewater, 0%, for a limited amount of time, right?
Two years, once you start making expenditures, which we've already started.
Right, we've already started making the expenditures, so we only have two years of 0%. And now we're being delayed because of state agencies? And so the clock is ticking on the 0%.
Correct.
Financing because of a delay from the state agencies?
Correct.
That seems.
That's the state.
The state, both ends, yeah.
You seem surprised.
Yeah, are you amazed?
I'm not, I'm not surprised, I am expressing concern slash frustration slash we're going to be left held, holding the bill because the state can't get it frozen around.
Everything gets more and more expensive the longer things drag out.
I'm not worried about holding the bill, right, with EFC, you know. But we are, we are at subject to converting it to long-term debt at the end of that two-year period.
Right, but the goal is that you've completed the work by the end of the two-year period.
So the scope of the project has already been defined.
Right.
We're not, nothing's been proposed by either organization to change the scope of the project, which would change the expenditures. We're talking about procedures and procedures don't impact expenditures on the scope.
Okay, except depending on whatever these people come back with bids, that changes, that changes the price, it doesn't change the scope.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't anticipated.
Yeah, we, we've said it, we've, we've assumed that we have, we have a budget of $3 million.
We have $5 million in our zero interest account.
Right.
We are asking for $3.5 million.
Right.
In terms of expending on this project.
And hoping that the bid comes in somewhere in that ballpark.
Because we didn't think it's, it's a $5 million project.
Right.
And we still don't think it's a $5 million project.
Right.
The water department.
Is a $6 million.
Totally different.
Totally, yeah.
We have the bond, we have the note, we need to get the bids out. We, the engineering firm still says that we're within the scope of the project without impacting the price.
So we haven't actually started work at either plant? And we've already incurred disinterest? Or we've already pulled the bond for the water plant?
We're occurring, we, I told you, we started incurring debt a long time ago in terms of, we took the ban out.
Yeah.
To pay for the engineering.
On the water plant.
Yeah, and then we took the ban out and used EFC to pay for the wastewater plant.
Right. So the point of my story is at the moment, because of state delays, we're paying interest on loans, at least in the water plant. We pulled the, we pulled the full long-term loan and we're paying interest on it and we haven't done the work. So are we, are we investing that money at the moment? Are we at least earning interest on it?
What we.
Yeah, we don't have the money.
We don't have any money.
You, we're not holding any money.
They're holding, they're.
Who's "they"?
EFC.
Yeah.
I just.
They're still charging us interest on it, right?
That $3,075 is for the new project, interest on the new project.
They're, they're charging us interest on the amount we've used, not the total amount.
Okay, thank you, that was my concern.
Yeah.
That was my concern.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Who has the advertisement?
Yeah, Martina wants to know who's doing this advertising?
Engineering firm would do it for us.
Delaware?
Yeah.
So they'll provide that prior to Monday?
It's up to them, that's what, this is, this has been worked out and agreed by them.
They do the whole thing.
Yeah, they do it all.
It's on you.
No, they, they.
Now you like it. Got to remember, the goal, got to remember, the goal here, the goal here is this is the prime time to get bids. We could be subject to higher bids if we delay this out into January because everybody, or no bids, like we've experienced before.
Right.
Because contractors already booked their schedules. So what we're trying to do is do an end run here.
Yeah. Okay, have you spoken to Delaware about this?
Yeah, oh yes.
And are they okay with it?
Absolutely, they agreed to the dates, they've agreed to the plan.
Oh, amazing.
Okay.
And that's why I'm bringing it forward to you because.
Are we optimistic that the state is going to approve whatever needs to be?
Delaware is very optimistic, yes.
And the contractor will hold that? And then the, there's, the contractor will hold the price for our timeframe for the next six months?
Yeah, that's why we're asking for 60 days for bid, 45 days for bid award by a set of bill of time.
Got it. Just ask them to hold it.
I agree, this is an end run, but I'm really trying to anticipate doing the right thing.
It's good, I mean, once we said, once we agreed with EFC, we are already on a timed schedule.
We already are.
To get it on, so yes.
Okay, thank you, I think it's smart.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Eleanor, you wanted to discuss the doughboy.
Yep, discussion of the doughboy.
There's no, we have no information, right? Just for your clear.
No, just the letter, I sent her on the letter.
Except for an email that you got from our attorney.
I'm just going to outline what I did so that the people here, you know, the public can hear what I did. And then I just have a question, a couple of questions for the board, but no resolutions or anything. Alright, so I started by thinking about, well, the first thing I needed to know is how a park can be created in a village? And that turned out to be a very elusive topic. I could not find any information on it, but there was a lot of information on this process called alienation, which is how you un-park something, how you change it from being a park to not being a park. And that's a very complicated process that actually has to go through the state. So once something is a park, it's very difficult to change it to some other use. But then I found out by accident that, I think maybe somebody actually pointed that out to me, that there's a whole booklet on alienation, and I read some of it, but actually embedded in that is the only information I got on how you actually create a park. So there's two ways to do it, one is by direct action. And direct action could be a resolution, or it could be somebody gifting a piece of property and saying that this is going to be a park. Those are the, those are by action. And the other one is by implication, and that is when something is treated, it's used, it's treated as being a park. It might be called a park and it's maintained as a park, but there's no formal declaration. And that, as you can, you know, well imagine, isn't as definitive. Alright, so I had spoken to lawyers when I went to the NICOM training, which is the New York Conference of Mayors, where I took various classes on how to be a trustee. And I talked to some of the lawyers there. I contacted the New York State Parks Division, I talked to Duchess County and the village historian. And basically, when I talked to like the county in New York State, NICOM, it always came down to, you really need to talk to your lawyer. So next, I went through the past minutes and I looked through all the minutes and I looked for any references there were to the doughboy and calling that green space a park. And I, I noted those, all those instances down and I went back through all the minutes, although I have to admit that in the late 1980s, the minutes were taken in shorthand. And so that's a future process, maybe that's where the hidden gem is and that's maybe where we can find out what. But anyway, it's in shorthand, I have to admit, I skipped those minutes for now. But I put together, and I also went through the comp plan and looked for references there. And then I put this information together, talked to a couple of people on the board. And then we agreed that I should contact David Gordon with the information. And what he did was, you know, he confirmed that yes, there's the two ways, there's direct action and implication. So he said that based on the facts he'd laid out, it seems likely that it would be found to be a park if we tried to change something. But that would, might entail legal action, but that might only arise if somebody challenged something with a park. And so that's kind of a little bit vague. And he said that in order for it to be by implication, he would have to do more research, which makes sense. I mean, you know, just based on the, you know, the quotes that I gave him, he can't make a, you know, a legal decision. He would probably have to look at case law, because as he pointed out, each park is different. And he would have to look at how the courts interpreted whether it was a park or not. But the direct action would, could be by resolution. You might do a survey, because this is part of the municipal lot, it's not really a separate piece of property. He said it's not necessary, but there would be, a SEACRA would be, review would be required. It would make sense to coordinate with the county, because certain, these are certain actions that you have to do to check with the county. For example, the comprehensive plan, Lydia checked with the county and then they gave us a determination. So we would have to go through a process like that. And he suggested we might want to coordinate with DOT because it is on Route 308. And then possibly subdivide the lot if that's what we chose to do. So my first question is, we've got the, the implication, do we go that route? Because even by implication, it would cost money because we would have to pay the lawyer to investigate this. Or do we go straight to resolution? And I could then follow that path and, you know, come up with what steps we really need to take, a possible resolution and what it might cost to complete that. So that would be my first question, if anybody has any preferences.
I, I have a thought. Thank you for doing all of this research, super helpful. It feels like, for the moment, I think we can safely assume that short of having it listed on a state database, it looks like a duck, it talks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it, you know.
Could I just explain that? Because it turns out that this would be a county database, which is why they said, because it's not a state park.
Got it.
It wouldn't go in there. because it's not a state park, it wouldn't go in there, but that's why they suggested that we coordinate with the county, because it's not in their database, it's interesting, because the mini park and the Legion Park are in their database, but this is not.
This is not, right.
But this is not in the county database.
Correct.
It's not, or the others are in a state. The others are registered in the state parks, because they're surveyed, identified as a piece of property.
So it's a village park but registered in a state database somewhere?
The Legion Park and the Mini Park are registered in the state database.
Got it.
So as Eleanor said, if you wanted to change it for any other use, you have to go back through the state, because now there, there's rules on changing existing state.
Right, well, I mean, it sounds like, from this alienation process, that it sounds like, because it has walked like a duck for the last twenty years, if we tried to change it back into a parking lot, we could be sued, and we would probably lose. But the point of, the point of my story on this one is, the comp plan came up with a really brilliant use for part of the municipal parking lot, that would actually make that particular green space bigger, and have it be a village green. And so I would, personally, I would hesitate to do anything about this particular park until we've had a conversation about what we want to do about the village green, because it seems like if we're going to go through the process of subdividing the parking lot and creating a park, we should actually create the park that we want to create, not the one that currently has existed as a bit of a stopgap, it feels like.
Plus, another thing to think about is the suggestion to close the exit, and that was going to be the next part.
Right.
If we were going to do that, it would make sense to do that all together, rather than to.
Exactly. So I think for, I think for the moment, what you've discovered is that, you know, for all intents and purposes, despite state and county databases, this is a green space that needs to be protected and maintained by the village. I don't know if we want to call it a park, but whatever. But in the meantime, if we want to officially make it a park, I'd like, I would like to have it be part of this bigger conversation.
Alright, so the next question I had was, I'm thinking that maybe we should get some members for the park committee, because I think it would be helpful to.
That actually feeds into my conversation that I want to have with you all about the comp plan, and next steps on that, but it can, it doesn't have to. So we can either create a little committee or not.
So I didn't know if you wanted to just create, you know, like, an ad hoc committee, or did you want to actually come up with a, you know, a park committee?
So one idea that I had about the comp plan was, it's now time to start thinking about implementation and winding down the comp plan committee and creating a comp plan implementation committee, and the comp plan implementation committee could have a series of subcommittees underneath it, one of which would be like a parks conversation. That could, that, that conversation could be part of this, obviously, you would work with that subcommittee, just like you would work with the complete streets committee, just like you would work with the environmental committee. But that doesn't have to be how it's there, that was just an idea I was going to propose later in this meeting. So, you know, a little bit late, prior to the comp plan, the committee was created, we had an ad hoc historic district committee running to help me figure out what to do with the historic district expansion, and we kind of folded that historic district ad hoc committee into the historic district subcommittee work, didn't really work, but you get the point. So.
Excuse me, we used, that information was very helpful, because it helped us move forward.
No, it helps us move forward on the first historic district sub, it did not, it was not a successful subcommittee of the comprehensive plan.
But it had a purpose.
Yeah.
And the purpose was to help us.
With that particular.
Change our historic reservation law.
And in that case, it did a brilliant job.
Absolutely.
As for it becoming a subcommittee of the comp plan, that was a different problem. But, so, you know, I'm a little agnostic, like, if you want to create a little ad hoc committee to help advise you on this question, I don't have a problem with that.
I think the only thing, if I had a small committee, I mean, I have no problem, I think, eventually, I think we should have more formal committee, but I think people want to feel like they're engaged, and they're, you know, they're, people have approached me, they want to be part of the conversation, so I can just listen to what they have to say, you know, bring it back to the board, so that.
But what if that contradicts what you've already done in the comprehensive plan?
Well, I mean, Eleanor's.
You can't really contradict what's.
Yeah, I mean, we have adopted comprehensive.
Yeah, they're worried, they're worried.
I just, the reason I'm asking is, what is the mission? If you have a committee, there should be a mission, and the mission should be defined, what their goal, and what their responsibilities and their goal and their charter is.
Well, that's why I thought that if we, if we populated the parks committee, which I see, I was looking back at the minutes, and I think like twenty twenty or something, there was still, there were still mentions of that committee, so evidently.
I thought it's a great idea, why don't you come forward with a plan for what the committee is going to be, and how their charter is, so that we can digest that and balance it to what we have, what do you think?
Are you saying that we already have a parks committee, it's just.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the village website, and there's just nobody.
Do we have a parks committee?
Yeah, I mean, I look back, well, it's called Parks and Recreation, actually, committee. There's minutes that talk about.
Is that the town committee?
I don't know.
I think, because you were.
Wait, more committees and projects. Oh, it's the Legion Park. Hold on, is it the Legion Park Committee?
No, that was just me.
Oh, that was just your thing.
That was just me getting information.
Okay, sorry.
I'm not aware of anything that we have.
Alright, so then maybe the next step would be for me to come up with a resolution.
Well, you're lead resolution, come forward with a plan for what the parks committee is supposed to do, so that we can understand and digest, how's that handled?
I would be, I would be super grateful if you could include in that mission some kind of research around what, how, how we manage our memorials.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
Memorials are outside of the park. We have lots of memorials that are not associated with the park.
Okay, great. Where do you want to have that?
I'm not sure, but let's keep, let's, let's call a duck a duck, and let's keep memorials another duck, and keep them separate for now, because it's, it's more extensive than the parks.
I get that, but most of our memorials are in our parks.
No, not. All of our chairs and benches are memorials.
Like I said.
Trees.
Most of our memorials are in our parks.
They're, they're on sidewalks all over the village. I, my suggestion is, let's call, let's go to the park first.
Alright.
If you don't mind, let's keep it redefined, so we know what we're working on. Is that okay?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Okay. Back request. Gail, I understand you're here to give us a special request on a tree. Could you come forward and tell us what you want to do?
My name is Gail Socia, I'm here to represent the Rhinebeck Hometown Holiday Tree Lighting Committee. We are requesting, as we have done for the past two events at the beginning of December, we're planning on doing this on November thirtieth, we have that date set down. We would like to put up a temporary tree to the right of the Doughboy, as we have done for the past two years. And that's my request.
Real tree or fake tree?
A real tree.
Real tree.
Temporary, for about a month.
So a cut tree, like what we've done for the last year.
Yeah, correct. We're going to dig a hole, somebody's going to dig a hole, we're going to stake it and put it up.
Put some stanchions to hold it in place, have our event, have it run through the holiday season, and remove it shortly after. Decorate it with bows and lights, so that when Santa comes around in the parade on the back of a flatbed, and is, or, well, we had Mrs. Santa as well last year, gets off, Santa comes over, we count down, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, and Santa lights the tree, and everybody goes, "Yay", and we hand out a couple hundred candy canes to the kids after our day of celebration.
And they go, "Yay".
Yay, and, you know, we have, that afternoon, we're going to have food trucks and vendors, as we've had before, and filling up the municipal parking lot.
Alright, everybody's mom here told me.
This event has gotten on for the last two years, I think, well, and it's been a wonderful community event. So I would like to see.
We're going to have a smaller version of Center Plus this year that was just announced at the Dutchre Form Church.
And that's only September seventh.
Right, and I feel that it's really necessary, with that being, for whatever reason, a smaller version, and my whole idea with this was to resurge this. The Chamber had it some years ago, and they decided they didn't want to do it any longer. So they came to us at Rotary, and I said, "I'll take it over." Two thousand nineteen, we had a blizzard. They canceled that, then we had COVID for a few years. And then we had a quiet year in two thousand twenty-two, formed a committee with a corporation. We had a really nice event last year. A lot of people attended, they were very happy to attend. We, you know, raffled off a couple of small trees that I had acquired from donations from one of my clients who had the Christmas tree farm in Statsburg, very nice man. So we're going to do all of that, and, you know, and it was a lot of fun.
So there is a difference, though, Gail, and the difference is, in the previous years, the village bought the, got the tree.
We're going to buy the tree.
So that can present a conundrum for us, in terms of letting outside organizations do that on municipal land.
Okay.
Whether you call it, whatever you want to call that space. So I think the concern here is, if, if you let one in, you got to let everybody in, so you, if you let an outside organization, not affiliated with the village, do something to change, modify something to a park, you cannot deny somebody else that other, the other, if they wanted, if somebody else wanted to do it, whether it's, I don't know, who's he what's from wherever, you know, there is law that makes that allowable.
Yeah, it's called the First Amendment of the US Constitution.
So.
Is that at all cases, or just for?
Yes, we have the ability to regulate time, manner, and place, we do not have the ability to regulate content. So if we open up village land to an outside organization to put anything on village land, we then have to allow any other outside organization to put whatever they want on village land under the same time, manner, and place.
On any village land.
So.
Pretty dumb that, though.
Well, yes, but we don't, we don't have to keep doing it.
Right.
No, we, we.
We can stop doing it, and.
We, the village, excuse me, we, the village have done this. We have not allowed any other organization.
But we have done it when we've allowed a menorah to go next to a holiday tree, put up by an outside organization.
Isn't that on the sidewalk, is it, right on the sidewalk?
It's on green, it's on green, and the sidewalk would be the same thing. So my, so my, so, and the Supreme Court has ruled, do not question me on this one, I do not know why or how, the Supreme Court has ruled that a holiday tree is not an example of a religious holiday, it is an example of a, it is a celebration of a season, because the pagans had trees before the Christian religion took them over for Jesus's birthday. So holiday, so governments are allowed to put holiday trees to celebrate the holiday season. Governments are not allowed to put anything that represents any other religion, however, including Christianity, we wouldn't be able to put a creche, we wouldn't be able to put a whatever. So the village is allowed to put a tree, but if we allow an outside organization to pay for and put a tree, then that opens, that opens the floodgates, flood, flood.
Floodage.
Thank you. So a question would be, would you be willing to donate either the money or the tree to the village, and then the village then plants the tree, probably asking the fire department to do it, or our highway guys to do it?
Like we've done in the past.
Like we've done in the past. Would that be something that you would be willing to do?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll pay you to do it. We can't have a holiday tree lighting.
Without a holiday tree.
Holiday tree.
Right.
I'm not going to stand there holding lights and go, "Oh, free". I'm not going to do that.
Thank you for your flexibility and understanding on this.
I get it.
I'm trying not to.
I understand the game.
Yeah.
But it's ridiculous, so.
It is, it is.
So can I get this resolution passed to say, "I agree, we'll pay you whatever you need" to get this tree?
No, you're going to donate it.
Yeah, you can donate it.
You're going to donate the tree to the village.
Okay, no problem.
Once you donate the tree to the village, the village.
The village can erect it.
The village will erect the tree.
And then what do we do with the menorahs, and somebody?
I don't know what we're going to do with the menorahs.
Let's cross that roof next, one step at a time.
Okay. No, because we can't put a menorah up, that's the First Amendment part.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Holiday Tree Committee to make a donation to the village of Rhinebeck for a holiday tree to be temporarily placed in the green space.
By the Doughboy.
In the municipal parking lot, so right at the Doughboy. Second, discussion.
I would like to just note that in the future, we should come up with, you know, we had talked about planting a tree, I think we should work on finding a place to do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Just to keep in mind, you know, that this, so that this doesn't keep happening.
And I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I just want to, I just want to make sure, because of, you know, the controversy over the tree, that this is just, this, even the temporary tree won't go on forever, we're going to be looking for a place to put a permanent tree, so that we don't have to, you know, worry about this area.
Does this make any sense to you? A permanent tree is five or ten blocks away. I say to a couple hundred people, "You want to see the tree lit and see Santa?", you get to hike five or ten blocks.
Gail, we're not going to get to the place to do that.
So let's stay on track here, alright. Eleanor, let's stay on track. Right now, we're focused on the situation of the, and I have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion in regard to that motion?
I think it's been a lovely community event.
Thank you.
Gone awfully high.
Thank you for your work.
I'm glad that we can have put it out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Gail.
I can go home now?
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this.
I guess some of that, because you have no work.
I don't know, are you interested in a turkey trot? No, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Good night.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, a village Rhinebeck event application for Firmcliff Forest Inc. By the way, I was there today, such a lovely view, and such a lovely place to hike up to that tower. But anyways, their major fundraiser is the Turkey Trot. The event date is eleven twenty-eight, set up time is six AM, event start time is eight AM, the event end time is at ten thirty, and then it's an hour for tear down. I think you make a motion to approve the Turkey Trot application for the Firmcliff Forest. Second, discussion.
One, do we have a cap on the tickets? Or how have we handled that?
It goes, we, it goes in and out of Mount Ruston Road, goes down Mount Ruston, goes down Montgomery, and goes back Montgomery.
Does the town help us pay for the police?
Yeah.
Because this is all within the town.
No, no, it's half.
Okay.
And we put an officer out at the end to control traffic, and yes.
Okay, and the town helps cover that cost?
Yeah, we don't.
Oh, great.
Is their estimate about the same as previous years, in terms of what they put on?
Yeah, I think it's about a thousand.
Yeah, okay, it's well attended.
Yeah, but it's not, but it's not.
It's not bananas.
We had a problem with the, you know, things got really large.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, Madagascar Art Display. This is from Buckley Middle School. Does this get back into where we were in our previous discussion? This is to request locations on trees along East Market Street to advertise for their Madagascar art event. It's, it's a period of time, it's art, that will be on banners for eight days, from ten eighteen to ten twenty-five, on trees on East Market Street.
Oh, is this part of the sec- second?
Yeah, yes.
This is part of their trip with Culture.
Yes, to bring awareness. Yes, to bring awareness of their trip, yes.
Well, that's great.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Martina, I don't, don't, do not have, I'm sorry, the Halloween parade, I think it was, let me just.
The event itself was already approved, they're just asking to change the time.
From 1:00 to 2:00, or 2:00 to 1:00.
It was originally 2:00, they'd like to now start at 1:00. Started, done is okay with us.
Correct.
Some moved? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approvals. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:324.
Second.
Discussion.
As amended with our little comments.
All in favor, say aye.
Already been made in one second because I didn't get any of that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:524.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:1024.
As amended?
Are they also?
Yes.
Go to second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, motion to approve the minutes on 9:1224.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
9:12, sorry, someone else needs a second. Can someone else second? Those are Lydia's minutes. I took the notes.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I approve them?
No. Yes, you can.
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Except Vanessa.
I wasn't there.
You're abstaining.
Abstained.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:2424.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 The meeting that would go down in history.
I don't think we have enough meetings. Okay. Committees. Tree Commission. Rick.
Okay, Tree Commission has three action items. Committee received applications for Two Prospect Street to remove a large dead limb. To move Norway Maple on West Chesna, to remove dead limbs and prunable limb on a Norway maple to the west. Trim and shape a dogwood on Prospect Street and to trim, shape a plum tree on Prospect Street. The commission recommends that the village board approve this application. I'd like to make a motion to.
They're all.
Second.
Thank you.
And this is for both?
This is for, for Two Prospect.
Just Two Prospect.
Two Prospect, it's for each one. If you've got a second, call for it.
She did. I'm gonna second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have another application from 20 South Street to remove three maples that have been identified previously as hazardous.
Oh, all three at once?
Yeah, because they're.
Rough. I, I know they're in rough shape, but.
Yeah, no, and they're not, and they're, those are listed as hazardous trees, so they really need to be removed.
I know.
Okay. So the, after discussion, the Tree Commission did agree, or it's recommend to the village board that they approve the removal of the three Norway maples at 20 South Street.
Second.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to start planting like 10-year-old trees.
There you go. Pay for it. Call them.
I'm just reading her minutes again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a final application from 25 Platt Avenue, which is to, simply for the pruning of a Norway maple. And the Tree Commission recommends that the village board approve that pruning at 25 Platt Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. Final note, Andrew Hunter has served three years and his term has expired and he's decided that he's gonna resign his position. And with that, there is an open position on the Tree Commission, which we have opened and we need to reopen.
Yes, so you're just now open for two?
This is the, this is the same one.
No, we are reopening for Pat Evans.
Right, but yes, now we second, correct, I'm sorry, that's.
Now we have two vacancies.
We have two vacancies on the board. So I'd like to make a motion that we advertise for two open divisions.
Can you separate them? Can you reopen the previous one and then?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the previous.
Second.
That we had, and then Martina, what do you want to do as the?
How long would you like to keep open? Today's the eighth.
Today's the eighth.
Do you want to do till the end of the month or have them do on the number first?
How about November 1?
Or how about November 8th because we have our meeting on the number 12.
Well, if they're doing the first, then you can conduct interviews that week.
Oh, okay.
Okay, first is good.
Till November 1, and who seconded it?
I did.
And then can you do the second motion?
Would you vote on this one?
To, oh yeah, can you vote on the, yes, I can.
Vote on this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to open a second advertisement.
Second.
For Andrew Hunter's position and the open, opening to run concurrently with the first one.
Town people are allowed on the Tree Commission, right? Preference to villagers?
Preference to villagers.
Got to check.
I thought we had something written in.
Check the law.
Yeah, but we, we, because of people's qualifications.
Right.
We do allow town folks to serve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it for the Tree Commission.
Climate Smart. I'm happy to announce that the village of Rhinebeck was one of the municipalities that won the Hudson Valley Regional Council's Building Bridges Award.
Isn't that two years in a row?
Yes.
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row. The Climate Smart Task Force will be tabling at the farmers market this weekend. We will be giving out some weatherization kits. And those were donated to us from Central Hudson, so if you're interested, come on by. I went with Meg from the Tree Commission and actually identified and tagged all of the trees in our hairy and buffer planting behind the highway department.
How many have survived?
About 45.
Wow.
Of 100.
Oh, that's pretty good.
I think that's pretty standard, actually. And they're getting big. It's amazing. And, yeah, just an update on the community choice aggregation. The first deadline for that RFP is October 18th, where prospective folks need to RSVP for a meeting with us. So that's coming up. We held our community-wide climate action planning workshop on September 22nd and it was well-attended with about 30 participants. We received some really great feedback and if people are interested, the, I have some little handouts by the front door village hall, where you can see a draft of our vision statement and you can provide feedback. You can turn in, write on the slip of paper and turn it in to Martina or put it in my mailbox. And, yeah, I think I already kind of gave you an update that the compost program is moving forward. So hoping we'll be able to announce that officially soon. And lastly, we met with nicer to folks regarding an energy study that we did at the water treatment plant. This was a free energy study that we earned through our clean energy communities' participation. And we have some ideas for low-hanging fruit to make that building more efficient. So whenever the time comes, we have that study and we, we have the information to reference.
Cool. Thank you.
Do you have a comprehensive plan, I think?
I do. The comprehensive planning committee met for what they expect to be the last time, last week or the week before, on September 26th. And one of the things that they talked about was Matt Johnson and I are going to get together and work on a toolkit that summarizes much of what we did in the village that can be shared with other municipalities. So as that evolves, I will keep you updated and show it to you and all the rest of it. It'll be very, it will be Rhinebeck neutral, there will be nothing about Rhinebeck in it. It'll just be like, this is the process that we did, that we recommend, but it doesn't, it won't have anything to do with, you know, people or recommendations or anything like that, just much more process-related. Because I've gotten more than one question from more than one fellow municipality on how to do what we did.
Thank you for that and I would, I'll share that with the New York State Climate Smart folks.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
You know, a comprehensive plan with sustainability elements in it is something that you can, you know, is part of that program and they're always looking for good reference material for people.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you. Yeah, Dutchess County was also very excited about the idea. So that's something that can come out of this, that has nothing to do with Rhinebeck itself, but something that can come out of a really good, really quite amazing process. That aside, I, I, I need to sleep a little bit, but I would like to, at some point in the next few weeks, generate a, a resolution to create, to shut down the comprehensive planning committee and to open up a permanent standing committee for the village that would move it from being under committees and projects to being under boards on the website. Trying to make that graduation to the comp plan implementation committee. And the purpose of it would be exactly as described in the conference plan. The purpose of this committee would be to implement the conference plan. As I've described it to other people who I've asked if they're interested in participating, you know, the whole thing continuing. They're like, well, what would we do? And I was like, well, it seems like your job would be just, you know, do this to the village board saying, have we done this yet? Have we done this yet? Have we done this yet? I would also like to have them, as I mentioned earlier, have subcommittees. Obviously zoning is a big part of it, but climate smart, parks, complete streets, sort of the stuff that has nothing to do with zoning, making sure that we're moving forward on that. It would also be wonderful if the complaint implementation committee dug up grants that would help us pay for it. And so it's not just a, you know, a poking committee. It's, it's also a, you know, a working committee in some, in many ways.
A lot of this, this, this is gonna touch a lot of code, even outside of zoning.
Totally.
And so is this committee going to be recommending code, writing code, getting consultants to write code? Where, where, what, what part of the process are they?
So that's a great question. I think in terms of code and expenditures of village finances, the priorities are zoning code. As for other codes and expenditure of village finances and the generation of codes, I think that needs to be coordinated by, you know, a trustee, if not, you know, me. But like, if you're on the complete streets and it generates code, then you would be the point person and then you and I would have a conversation, we would figure it out, right? But thank you for asking that question. That's something I need to think about.
Okay, because on committees, it's our responsibility to spend.
Yeah, of course.
They can't spend, they can't, as Lydia said, I think their job is to, this becomes a living document. Their job is to keep us on track.
Right.
And if they have interesting concept or going forward, but it's our job to really enact the law, take it forward and, and make it work.
Right.
Okay, I'm just curious to what degree they're gonna be part of the process.
I mean, honestly, given how busy we are, like, if they want to be a big part of the process and they come up with things like model laws or they have recommendations, sure. You know, obviously, all of that needs to be examined by, you know, our attorneys and probably Michelle. But.
But they can't take it to them.
But they.
Or the gatekeepers.
Were the gatekeepers of that one.
That, that I get. They, they can't.
That and money.
That I get.
Would they be doing any prioritizing or anything like that?
Yeah, that would be part of it too, of, you know, okay, in 2425, the village is really thinking hard about the zoning code. You know, what do we want to have them think about concurrently or next, or what's the most important thing after that? What are low-hanging fruit? What can we do that doesn't require code? What can we do that doesn't require money? You know, all of that kind of stuff. It's also, the purpose is, you know, this is a standing committee of the village, right? So when the comp plan needs to be updated again, you know, hopefully not the way we just did, but like here and there, if sheroes are proved to be a really bad idea, then, you know, okay, we update that part of the plan and think about complete streets in a different way, right? So I, that, that's what I would like to do and it's gonna take a minute to do it, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't losing track of comprehensive plan now that it's adopted.
Also, would it be possible for, I just imagine like a spreadsheet version of all the recommendations and then tracking which ones are priority, which ones are done.
Yeah.
Which ones are in process.
Yeah.
And have that, you know, on the website for the public to see.
Oh, that's a great idea. I hadn't thought about putting it on the website, but that's a good idea. Yes, that was one of the things that I've started doing during planning board meetings, is developing a spreadsheet like that where I'm just copying and pasting the recommendations from the plan into, into a spreadsheet. And then that was gonna be my first gift to the implementation committee. That in addition to a hard copy if they wanted it. But yeah, so. Oh, speaking of which, I did have hard copies printed. I'm gonna have, Martina's gonna have one, Ryan's gonna have one in the building planning and zoning office, and I'm gonna have, I think, two at the library. So if people want to have hard cop, look at a hard copy, they can.
And they'll be able to sign it out or it has to stay there?
It has to stay, well, I don't know what the library will do, but it has to stay here.
Yeah, I know ours do. I'm, I'm going to the library.
I think the library, the other documents like that, they have, like the NRI, people can look at it there at the library.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so in general, are people okay with that idea?
Are you done?
Yeah, that was, this was a conversation. Okay, thank you.
All right, said great time. We always like to recognize our village employees and this time I'd like to recognize wastewater operator trainee Andy McDermott, who's been here one year, already doing very well at our wastewater treatment plant and looking forward to taking his certification.
Great.
Marvelous.
Fantastic.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At 8:28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Panda.